... I sent my mom over, but Eric has a little machine on your tablet. So if someone can be sixteen feet of the box.
I hate wearing jackets. I do too. No? I always feel like I'm...I'm always... I don't want to wear a jacket. I can't get jackets big enough for my height line.
Probably.
He's got a jacket. He forgot his jacket. I hate it. I still find it. Oh, really? I do.
Oh, you're not?
It's dangerous.
Okay, nice.
I'll wear one when I have to. Changed that, right?
The bottom number.
Yeah, I want you to change it again. We'll figure it out.
And we talk. And, um, also, you're the one presenting on the pillow.
Did you move him out of the game?
He was there.
He did though.
He was here?
He's here now.
Morning, everyone. Ask you to please rise for the opening prayer and pledge allegiance. Alan.
He's still here.
It's on. Thank you. Morning, everyone. Ask you to please rise for the opening prayer and pledge allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, over the past month, we have recognized an honorary Military Army Armed Forces Day, Military Spouse Appreciation Day, the Children Home Patriots Day, and Silver Star Service Banner Day. We have set aside the month of May as National Military Appreciation Month. This week, we will reflect on those that courageously laid down their lives for freedom. The sacrifice of these patriots have led those military spouses and children happy to move on without them. They've paid that price in the name of freedom for each of us. The Lord be asked you to bless their families and fill their homes and lives with strength and peace. God, you yourself has taught us that greater is no love than this, to lay one's life down for one's friends. Help us to always honor their memory. Guide us. We protect and care for the wounded comrades. Keep us alert that we remain diligent and watchful caretakers for the freedoms and liberties they gave their lives for. Father, help us to remember that freedom is not free and for us to be worthy of their sacrifice. Let us stand always for our flag in the memory of those who shed their blood. We thank you for the brave men and women who have fought and continue to fight for our nation. Sustain our freedoms and blessings that you have provided. Please say your humbly praying in your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll convene the Commissioned Public Meeting at this time and ask for approval on the meeting.
I'll move to through.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Still carrying. At this time, we'll put a comment on the agenda items only. Hearing them, we'll move on.
Today, we have a proclamation for Memorial Day, and Commissioner Miss Sarah is going to read that.
Proclamation, National Moment of Remembrance on Memorial Day. Whereas Memorial Day is a day celebrated every year to reflect the honor and sacrifices and memories of the men and women who have served our country. And whereas since the formation in 1795, the citizens of Lycoming County have served with distinction in the military services of the United States of America and all of our nation's complex. Whereas each person who died in service to his or her country was a loved one who was cherished by the family and friends, and each death was a tremendous loss to the community, state, and nation. And whereas we honor our fallen soldiers, our military personnel, and our veterans who continue to serve with the ideas of freedom, and we urge all citizens to recognize the valor and the sacrifice of our honored war dead and to renew our commitment to uphold the ideas for which they died. And whereas National Moment of Remembrance encourages all Americans to stop what they are doing at 3:00 PM local time on Memorial Day, May 31st, 2021, to observe the moment of silence reflection as National Moment of Remembrance on Memorial Day. By pausing for one minute as a tribute of gratitude to all of the individuals who have made the ultimate sacrifice for each of us in the United States of America and in witness thereof, we, the Commissioners of Lycoming County, have set our hand and seal on this 25th day of May, 2021. Lycoming County Commissioners Scott Mesgrue, Chairman, Tony Missara, Vice Chairman, and Richard Maravito, Secretary.
Go ahead. Do we need anything else?
Yes. They'll be having a ceremony up at Wahoo Drive, believe it's Saturday, correct? And there is going to be a fascinating keynote speaker, you know, the Admiral, who is on a nuclear sub. I urge everyone to take the time and go up to that memorial. The Commissioners, this board, and the past boards have supported that memorial up there. It's incredible. It's one of the nicest memorials you're going to find. And when you take the time, you listen to the speakers, and then you look at the memorials themselves that bring tears to your eyes, the number of Lycoming County vets that served in those wars. Take the time and be grateful for what they did to protect our freedoms, and that's the least we can do for them by remembering them. Thank you.
You know, if you can't...Saturday is going to be a very good ceremony, as the Commissioner described. There are also going to be ceremonies other places around the county, so if you can't make it Saturday, there'll be some all through...The Sun Gazette had a listing of all of them in different places, and I'm not sure if there's a website where one could go to look it up. Maybe the Veterans Office can let us know that when they speak, but I'm not sure. But I think it is important for us to remember the spouses and the partners and the children who were left behind on this Memorial Day, because as the prayer mentioned, they go on with their lives. And so it's important for us, I think, to try to reach out and just be conscious of them and try to see if we can assist them in any way.
And Memorial Day is traditionally the start of the summer, unofficial start of the summer, and it's a day that families get together and they may go camping or head to the shore, but it's so much bigger than that. It's what it's truly about, and it's about our veterans that have given the ultimate price. And we have so much to thank them, because without them, we wouldn't have our freedoms. And they paid that sacrifice, and they've left their loved ones behind. And it's our responsibility to try to assist those loved ones, whether it's children or spouses. We have a fantastic Veterans Administration in Lycoming County that does it every day. We thank you folks for your service and for how you reach out to those veterans and help them each day. And that's part of the population that we need to focus on. We need to assist them every day, the ones that are still here. And when you see a veteran and you see someone in uniform, thank them. You know, teach our youth to respect these individuals. Thank them, because we do so much to them. So we have a proclamation here. I'd like to give it to you, Mike, in behalf of the Commissioners and get a picture of you and your staff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would you like to come up? Do you have anything you'd like to say, first of all?
I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners for the wonderful tribute. I think you've recognized the veterans and families of Lycoming County for the service that they've provided for over 200 years. It's a wonderful tribute. Commissioner Maravito, I don't know if there's a clearinghouse, other than the Sun Gazette's article this morning had a pretty good rundown on activities for the weekend, so I'd urge everybody to participate. The ceremony at Wahoo Drive will be at 11:00 AM on Saturday. Rear Admiral Larry Marsh, a submarine veteran, will be the keynote speaker, and they'll have also the dedication of the North Wall, which is just fabulous. So I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for their support for the park and for all you've done for veterans every day. It doesn't go unnoticed.
Thank you.
Do you want to...put the keys up for departments? Should he do the department first and then we'll take?
Yeah, why don't we do that? Okay, so do you...Eileen?
Um, yeah, so this week's informational series, County Departments and What They Do For You, is the Lycoming County Veteran Affairs with Mike McMunn.
Thank you again. Good morning once again, and thank you for this opportunity to inform the public of the services provided by the Office of Veterans Affairs. First, I'd like to introduce and thank our staff. Ms. Natalie Stepi, Assistant Director of Veterans Affairs, Veteran Service Officer Jim Mitchley, and our Administrative Assistant, Ms. Lacey Holmes. All of our service officers are accredited by the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs and receive annual training. Our office may be relatively small, but it is responsible for providing services to an estimated 10,000 Lycoming County veterans and their families. During fiscal year spanning July 2019 through June 2020, the office was responsible for submitting 278 claims for disability and pension compensation. Awarded claims generated $4.9 million in compensation benefits coming into Lycoming County. During that same period, we enrolled 94 veterans in VA healthcare. In conjunction with the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs and the Pennsylvania Department of Military and Veterans Affairs, we assist our veterans in applying for VA healthcare, disability compensation, service and non-service connected pensions, burial and memorial benefits, veterans' widows' benefits, and blind and paralyzed veterans' pensions. Veterans rated 100% total and permanent are eligible for property tax exoneration and free hunting and fishing licenses. With the assistance of the Military Department of Military and Veterans Affairs, the Lycoming County Hometown Heroes Fund, and the Pennsylvania Wounded Warriors Fund, we assist financially needy veterans with temporary emergency assistance. The state money is necessary to fund the temporary assistance projects come from the $3 check-off donation you see on the Veterans Trust Fund on driver's license renewals. The assistance provided by Lycoming County Hometown Heroes comes from private donations and the sale of the Hometown Heroes banners you see proudly displayed on city streets. We urge everyone to purchase banners and contribute to these funds. Hometown Heroes has no paid staff, and the only costs are for advertising and the cost of the banners themselves. All the money comes back to needy veterans. The need for assistance to pay for utilities, rent, car repairs, and necessary home fix-ups must be due to a sudden loss of income or an unexpected expense. The county is also responsible for providing burial expense payments to the families of deceased veterans and providing flags and flag holders for each veteran's grave. We work with funeral directors as they apply for burial benefits for their clients. The county also provides benefits or funds to the cemeteries for maintenance of veterans' graves. As we approach Memorial Day, I am proud to say that with the invaluable assistance of veterans' organizations, fire companies, churches, Boy Scouts, Little Leaguers, and on-told private citizens, we were able to distribute over 18,500 flags in 144 county cemeteries, ranging from a lonely Revolutionary War grave in a farmer's field...
Can I interrupt you for a moment?
Yeah, sorry.
Would you, whoever's on the line, please put your phones on mute?
They did.
Thank you. Sorry.
We were able to distribute over 18,500 flags in 144 county cemeteries, ranging from a lonely Revolutionary War grave in a farmer's field to the 5,401 graves in Wildwood. We want to take this opportunity to publicly thank all of those individuals for taking time to remember our veterans on this and every Memorial Day. Our experience has shown time and again that many, many veterans and families are unaware of the benefits to which they are entitled. While not all may be eligible due to the nature of their military service or the particular income limitations placed on the provision of some benefits, veterans who suffer service-connected disabilities are entitled to compensation. In the event a veteran's death is attributable to the service-connected disability, the surviving spouse may be eligible for benefits. Depending upon income and assets, one significant benefit available to veterans who are homebound and unwilling to leave their home without assistance and who require assistance with activities of daily living or nursing homes is called aid attendance. Our staff can also assist veterans in the process of enabling VA healthcare. We are fortunate to have a VA community-based outreach clinic in the county. Thousands of veterans are provided with top-quality healthcare at the local clinic or at the Wilkes-Barre VA Medical Center. The local clinic employs doctors, nurses, psychiatrists, and psychologists to treat veterans with routine medical issues, prescriptions, COVID vaccinations, and provide help to the many numbers suffering from post-traumatic stress disorder and other mental disorders. VA healthcare also provides free treatment to veterans in need of treatment for medical or for military sexual trauma. With the introduction of VA care in the community, many health services that cannot be supplied by the VA can be provided by a facility such as UPMC. The Vet Center, located on East Fourth Street, is yet another valuable asset serving the veteran community. This federal agency provides combat veterans and their families with readjustment counseling services. Staffed with dedicated professional counselors, the Vet Center assists veterans in their effort to make a successful transition from military to civilian life. We work in conjunction with these and other community-based social services, including Career Link, STEP, Veterans Court, the Veterans Multi-Service Center, the Lycoming County Parade Committee, and the Lycoming County Veterans Council to provide referral services to veterans and their families. We want you to know we are here to serve you, our veterans, and your families. In closing, the Office of Veterans Affairs would like to wish all citizens of Lycoming County a happy and safe Memorial Day. Once again, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
You know, Mike, just a comment before we do. Do you know whether we have a higher per capita number of veterans in rural Pennsylvania, in rural communities than in urban and suburban?
From what I see, Commissioner, I think we do.
I think we do, too, and it's something that I've noticed anecdotally, but I'm positive that the numbers will back us up. And I don't know the reasons why, but it's very clear in our own community, we have probably about at least 13% of the population as veterans.
I believe so.
Yeah.
In terms of assistance rendered, what the VA provides in terms of compensation benefits coming back, Lycoming County ranks number one in fifth-class counties in the number of claims that we submit, so I think you're correct. We have a high demand from veterans in this county and in the amount of money that comes back into the county. It's new money.
Yeah.
Out of the 67 counties, the last statistics I saw for last month, we were rated ninth in the entire state in those areas. So I think there's a very high demand. I think the Veterans Administration recognizes that by placing a Veterans Vet Center here.
Right.
By the clinic that is well-staffed and attentive to the needs of our veterans. So we're very fortunate in that respect. I think that the VA recognizes that and the Department of Military and Veterans Affairs of the state.
Yeah, and that's a tribute to the four of you, and obviously to those who came before you, to George and the others, but the fact that you're ninth in the state, that we're ninth in the state in terms of money that comes back to veterans is the result of the work that the four of you do. And we want you to know, as leaders, we appreciate that, and we want to thank you for what you do on behalf of the veterans, because honestly, if you didn't take the moment that you do to care for the people, we wouldn't have those numbers. We have high rates of unemployment, of homelessness, of people returning with PTSD, and it's important to get the problems resolved for our veterans, you know? And I think it's also, I mean, it's fitting on a day like today. Mike, you and I were talking about your service on Memorial Day. So many of these folks who go to serve are very young. You know, they're losing...We lose them in prior wars, right? We're losing less now because they're coming back with more injuries, but they're surviving. They're surviving, but with head traumas and others. But many of them are very young when they pass away, 19, 20, 21 years old. It's hard for the families, you know? On Memorial Day, we have to remember that it's hard for a father and a mother who raised a child, and they lose him in a conflict at age 21 or 22, and those siblings of that child to remember. And so that's what we do on Memorial Day, by helping the vets. You help us say thank you every day, and we want to just say thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And I'd just like to add that, you know, Commissioners, we get to stick out our chest many times from veterans coming to us and say, hey, you guys do a great job for your veterans. You know, I'm a vet, da-da-da. Okay. We hired you. You do the job, and it's so well-appreciated. And I can tell you, I won't give you the counties, but I can tell you on three separate occasions where I'm at county events other than Lycoming, and we've had veterans come up to us as far away as an hour and say, I go to your veterans' office, because they get things done. That's all I need to say. You guys, incredible work that you do, and it's well-appreciated not only by us, but the community as well. So thanks.
Thank you again, Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. Next is 2.0, Accountable Cash Requirements Report with Michelle McDernan.
Morning, Michelle.
Good morning, Commissioners. We're requesting that you approve the cash requirements report, and there has been an adjustment to add a check for STEP for the pass-throughs for the Emergency Renters Assistance Program in the amount of $745,171. So that will adjust the total to $1,409,629.62.
Okay, and again, we want to thank STEP for the assistance they're providing to renters, landlords, and utility companies to help with the pass-through of these monies to help get those bills paid.
And just so everyone realizes, that's federal money that we're passing through. The ERP is federal money. And there's actually a check we need to pull out, which is the Woody Williams check. Now, that is a little bit of surprise, Michelle.
Okay.
But it just came up. It's a check for, I think, 40...
$43,000.
$43,000. We want to pull that check. There's no problem, but we need to get a couple of things straightened out before we send the money down.
Okay.
If you could just be sure to pull that check.
Okay. Did you have any other questions or comments?
Well, yes, yes. So... When you look at the drug, diamond drugs, you see the inmates, they're for their medications and $9,319. I want to thank the courts again, you know, they've...and Judge Butts for coming up with alternatives to incarceration. And for the most part, they work quite well. Yes, we do have some obstacles at times, but when you look at...these are real costs to the taxpayers. And I'm not even getting into medical or UPMC. This is just for prescription drugs for one month. So by having these ulterior programs, diversionary programs, it does save the taxpayers money, and we will continue to support as many of those programs as possible as long as the real bad guys are behind the bars. I'm okay with that. For the people that have come to me on, maybe daily, okay, and say, okay, how much is this costing us, your lawsuit between the controller and us? So I did a total so far, it's about $22,000 as of today. And it just makes us wonder, and I started reviewing other bills. Every time we pick up a phone, and I'm going to have to ask, is our solicitor on the phone? And you as well, Michelle. We pay solicitors, I believe, $4,300 annually just to be the solicitor. But that goes over 50 hours? Is that what it is, once they go?
No, sir. No, sir. That is a clamp fee for the entirety of whatever services the solicitor provides during the course of the year. the solicitor provides during the year. So you'll never see any additional charges for me, whatever service I provide to include attendance at meetings, periodic contract reviews, general advice, participation, for example, in the controller litigation. There's still an hourly bill for that. And that's all covered in the $50,000 annual retainer. Assistant solicitors are paid on an hourly rate of $120 for other partners, $100 for associates, which with all due respect, is way below the market.
Well, thank you for that clarification, Jay Data. I appreciate that. But, you know, the solicitor, and I can appreciate the contract that I reviewed, that travel costs were not included, were not included. We would not pay for travel time for a solicitor that comes from Pittsburgh. Which makes me question why aren't we using local attorneys to do county business? Just thought I'd bring that up. Good than that? I'm good? Let me do the quick math here. We're going to bring that total back down to $43,000. Is that correct?
That would bring it down to $1,366,629.62.
$1,366,629.62. I'll make a motion to approve the cash requirements of $1,366,629.62.
I'll second that.
All papers, aye?
Aye.
Aye. So carry.
Thank you, Michelle.
I am going to add this, that when you take a look at the detail of the information that goes through both departments, just in paying bills, it's an enormous amount of work. From HR looking at contracts or making sure that things are correct with the payroll and things, but to our controller's office and our budget and finance departments. I mean, I added up the numbers today, and there were a lot of them. And you know what? I did it three times, and I came up with different calculations.
And that's in near-garden.
Wow. Okay. Let's try this again. So there's a lot of detail in what you're allowed to charge for or what you will pay for. And you saw it in this report today. So I appreciate the hard work that both offices do in making sure that the taxpayers are paying the fair amount or the correct amount.
Thank you. We all try to work together.
Great. Thank you.
3.0 Personnel Actions with Roxanne Creco.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Roxanne.
In pre-release, we have Alex M. Hamm as a full-time replacement resident supervisor, pay grade six, $16.76 an hour effective June 7, 2021. At the prison, Michael D. Minier, full-time replacement rover, pay grade CO2, $19.856813 per hour effective June 27, 2021. Also at the prison, Jesse J. Wagner, full-time replacement promotion, intake officer, pay grade CO2, $19.32 an hour effective June 27, 2021. At the prison, Joel A. Schweitzer, full-time replacement correctional officer relief, pay grade CO1, $17.46 an hour effective May 31, 2021. And finally, at the prison, Kate W. Bertram, full-time replacement correctional officer relief, pay grade CO1, $17.46 an hour effective May 31, 2021.
Okay, so all positions that do the correctional systems, replacement jobs. Okay, any questions or comments? Motion to approve.
Just the fact that, you know, we're doing what's necessary to get the COs back up to full staff. And again, we appreciate the corrections officers for the sacrifices they're making. I mean, they're doing double shifts at times. And, you know, if you're married and you're a female and you have children, this is very difficult on them because it's mandatory that they work these extra shifts. So we're looking forward to filling all those positions as soon as we can.
We have been getting applicants on a weekly basis. They are interviewing on a weekly basis. And hopefully, two to three per week, we're trying to fill those positions.
That's good news. Okay. Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All papers, aye?
Aye.
So carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have an informational item with Austin DeWitt, 4.1.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Austin.
Good. So today we have the Bridge Bundle Winning General Construction Contract Award. This is for bundle one. It's the aluminum box culverts that will go in starting this, hopefully next month, and then throughout the summer. So we thought today would be a prudent opportunity to have Britt Bassett and Connor Bassett from Bassett Engineering come in and do a brief overview of the project, where we're at, where we're going to move forward. But I wanted to kind of touch on a couple of items that I know we've touched upon in previous meetings, whether it was the staff briefing or down here, that I thought would be worthwhile to kind of go over really quick. So I wasn't on the staff when we awarded design engineer. It was some combination of John and Scott, Mark and Sal. I'm not sure who the staff was at that given point in time. But I know they left it very ambiguous as far as the RFP, you know, what they're asking the design engineer to do. We allowed them to determine what kind of bridges would be installed, the number of bundles, and the order that the bridges would be put in. So Bassett Engineering's approach was to study each bridge, determine the possible structure types that may work for each one, work with the municipalities to figure out which one is the best fit, and then ultimately bundle similar bridge types regardless of, you know, where they're at in the county, so that, you know, you got economy of scale. You save money by bundling light types with light bridges. This resulted in four bridge bundles, the first of which is, again, aluminum box culverts. Earlier this spring, we did a pre-purchase for those four box culverts for the summer's bridges. In doing so, we were able to save around 30% because we bought them together through Co-Stars. And by having Britt and his staff buy them, we were able to save money by not paying the up-charge that the general contractor would have charged us had they purchased the bridges. So there were some significant savings there. Those savings, coupled with the general construction bid amount that we received and will hopefully be awarding today, has resulted in what our staff would believe is a pretty comfortable contingent fund moving forward for bundle one and hopefully into the other bundles. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Britt and/or Connor to kind of go over the project from their perspective, where we're at and where we're hopefully going to be here in the short-term future. So let's turn it over to Britt.
Thank you, Commissioners. We really appreciate the opportunity to work on this exciting project for the county. And as Austin said, we were selected, competitive selection, with a number of other engineers. Our approach was based on previous experience we had. We had done bridge bundling for other clients. And the concept we had early on was to bundle similar type structures. And that would determine how many bundles we would have and then bid them together. So, you know, bundle one, as Austin mentioned, is aluminum box culverts. And we've done about 20 of these so far ourselves with other clients, and we're doing more this year. The total cost for the bundle one, four bridges, between the pre-purchase cost of $205,000 and the general construction contract of a half million dollars, is $705,000. Now, the estimated cost from the request proposal the county put out was $1,368,000. So we're saving $663,000. Our cost is almost half what the budget cost was. And that's because these are very efficient structures, and they're appropriate for the situation they're being put in. And that, to us, is the key, use the right structure type for the right situation. These are rural roads, very low-volume roads. There's no reason not to save the money. The aluminum boxes don't corrode. They should last 50 or maybe 100 years. They held up floods. There's one up in Pleasant Stream Road. They went through that flood in 2016. The road washed out. The structure's still there. So they hold up. Bundle two is the next group, and we're currently designing bundles two and three. Bundle two is pre-cast structures, so that'll be pre-cast concrete structures, box culverts in urban situations like Jersey Shore and Loyal Sock, replacing existing structures there. And then concrete arches, we've done a few of those. And they're going to be in larger streams, more rural settings. And they're very attractive-looking structures. The one we have up at Upper Bidens Road in Lewis Township, it's a beautiful arch. And a little more expensive, but they're more durable. Those we look at with higher velocity streams, or when you have an urban situation, it has to be these box shapes because you don't have any headroom to do taller structures. Bundle three are GRS bridges. That's an innovative type. Federal Highway Administration started pushing less than 20 years ago. And they've become pretty popular. And they're very innovative. You literally use masonry. You can use cinder block for the facing of them. We have these larger concrete blocks. And you do layers of geotextile fabric and soil gravel for the abutments. And then you put whatever type superstructure you want on. And they're popular. And some Penn Towne districts are doing a lot of those in District Two. I'm not aware of too many being done in this part of the state. These may be some of the first ones done in North Central PA. They're also a very cost-effective structure. So bundles two and three are both cost-effective. The pre-cast is cost-effective because of, you know, all the manufacturing is done in a factory. They show up on site. They're assembled within a couple of days. They come in on tractor-trailers, and the entire bridge is assembled in a matter of a couple of days. And I think I would invite the Commissioners out to see some of those. That's a pretty great thing to see. The GRS bridges, as I say, they're less costly. They're used for longer structures. The aluminum boxes, like aluminum boxes, if you're under 20-foot span, that's definitely the most cost-effective structure. You have a longer span, but still low-volume road. They're also cost-effective. There, the stream velocity has to be low. You know, a concrete structure, obviously, you can have any velocity stream that can get through there. The GRS needs to be slower streams. And there are a lot of locations where you have it, like Logan Hill Road is a big swamp upstream. So when it does flood, you're not getting high velocities. The GRS works there. So we're going to be bidding, we're designing 10 of those bridges this year. Five GRS bridges, five pre-cast structures. They will be built next year. So we're building the first four structures this year, the aluminum box culverts. We're going to be building 10 bridges next year, so 14 of the 17 done. Next year, 2022, we're going to be designing three traditional beam bridge structures. One in Upper Fairfield Township on Old Cement Road, one in Lewis Township, Upper Bidens Road, and Gap Road, Washington Township. And those, because of the circumstances, need to be traditional beam bridges. They're the more expensive ones. But, you know, we are confident that, you know, if, who knows what's going to happen with inflation? But if pricing holds, we're confident in meeting the overall program budget with the 17 bridges. And our goal is that if, you know, we do come in under budget, there were other bridges that didn't make the list. This whole system spawned out of the small bridge inspection program. The county started in 2010, and we did inspections of these small bridges. And we noticed that, I think, 16 or 20 of those bridges got replaced just in the six years we were doing the program. Townships were doing it with their own money, particularly once they got Act 13 money. And now this program's going to take care of 17 more. But there are other bridges that need to be done. So, you know, my goal, if we are able to finish under budget, is maybe do some more bridges because there is further need beyond what we can do here. But it's been a tremendous program. We've got, you know, very good competitive bids on this first bundle. So I think it looks very strong, very promising for the future.
Any questions?
Yeah. Could you explain, and this is going way back, when I first came in as a commissioner, the importance of having our smaller bridges inspected? And it's not required, but we did it anyway. And I believe, Mark Moraski, you were part of that. So explain to the public, why is that important, especially here?
Well, it's so critical because the county started this pilot program for small bridge inspections. We inspect about 100 bridges, and Connor actually did hundreds of inspections under the program. He was a college intern. He was out helping with the inspections. And we found 40-some percent of the bridges were structurally deficient. It was just as bad as the larger bridges when the county started doing that program. So these small bridges, even though they're short spans, they were just as bad in condition as everywhere else. And, you know, one had to close right away on, I think it was Cemetery Road up in...
Heverne Township.
Heverne Township, right. So we found a bridge had to close right away, a number that had to be replaced right away. And I'd say the biggest advantage of these small bridges, particularly when the county's getting Act 13 money like La Cumbia, is these townships were able to replace some of the bridges on their own. That's how we started doing so many of these aluminum box culverts. They're so inexpensive that, you know, a township that gets a modest amount of Act 13 money is able to replace bridges on their own. And our first bundling program, Penn Township, which was one of the townships that was getting a lot of Act 13 money, we did four bridges in one year for Penn Township. So the program has identified so many needs. A lot of municipalities went out, solved some problems of their own. This, you know, the bond issue, the township, you know, county had the guts to do that registration fee. That's paying off because we're replacing bridges. And I think a key part is we're doing it much more cost-effectively than traditional way of doing bridges. There is a more cost-effective way. And I think that's a key part of what we're proving, is there's more than one way to do bridges. And when you talk about bridges, some of the bridges have traffic counts. Most of them have traffic counts under 500. Some have 20 cars a day. And you have to find the most cost-effective way to replace a bridge. Like, you just cannot afford to do the most expensive choice.
Mark, can you come up?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, just identify yourself.
Mark Moraski, former transportation planner here, now assistant, and enjoying retirement. But I miss you all terribly.
Mark who?
Hey, first of all, I just want to say that Britt is very modest. Okay? Those of you who have worked with this thing for about five years or so, to get to where we are today is completely extraordinary. And it's not only a successful story for La Cumbia County, but for the whole state of Pennsylvania. And the state's watching, I can assure you, okay? First, why Britt is modest is, as it was alluded, our transportation team wrote a request for proposal to hire an engineer. We did not write it as a government-prescriptive kind of thing, where we knew everything and then we just went around and picked an engineer. What we did was we deliberately wrote it to get private sector innovation. This is something we never did before. You know, we used to just do one bridge, hire an engineer, they'd go out and design it, then we'd build it like we're at today. We wanted something different. We wanted innovation. Because innovation from the private sector, we believe, was going to allow us to save more costs on the whole job. And we have nine firms, and I'm telling you, the eight other firms, many of them were your big boys in the state. They were some of your biggest engineering firms, designed thousands of bridges out there, okay? But Britt came in with a unique approach that we didn't see out of anybody else's proposals, okay? And he claimed he could save 30% in the proposals. And he claimed also that he could get these projects under construction within a year. Now, I've been involved with bridges for 35 years. I have never seen bridges go from a design start to shovels in the ground in a year period of time, okay? And so his whole approach was different. Now, he had also, the other dividend was, he had, his design contract was, I think, the second cheapest out of all of them. think, the second cheapest out of all of them. But here's a case where cheaper actually was better, okay? When it was all said and done, we think we've got a very quality product and as Britt said, we might be adding more bridges to this whole thing. The last thing I also want to tell you was, for those of you who remembered the town hall we had over the five dollar fee debate, it was an intense debate in the state of Pennsylvania. Twenty-six counties ended up doing it like ours. But you remember, we had skeptics from the public. There was people saying, you know, I don't think you're going to deliver what you're telling us, okay? We're going to pay this fee and what are we going to get out of it? And what we said then, I think we can say now that promises, basically promises made, promises delivered here. Um, we told those folks we were going to fix these bridges and that's what we were going to do, we weren't going to do other things with it, all right? And we did exactly that. So I'm just proud of our team that after I left here, that they didn't give up on this thing and they just, they pursued it relentlessly. And, um, why I say the state is watching is, um, I, I'm now Vice Chairman of the State Transportation Advisory Committee and I was fortunate to serve, uh, as the Chair of the Task Force that looked at the local bridge situation in Pennsylvania. And because local money for bridges is very scarce and there's really no priority from the state or federal level to give you that assistance. So we looked at the whole thing comprehensively last year during COVID and we, uh, the state hired Michael Baker International to do the study. The study is done now, it's up on the website of the State Transportation Advisory Committee and it really sheds light on this whole thing because these small bridges we're talking about, there's over seven thousand of them. And as Britt said, in most cases, you're at thirty-five, forty percent poor condition bridges where the time is running out on them, okay? And now there's a game plan being put into place of how to work with the municipalities and guess what? We are looked at in that study as a model for how to do it, okay? So everybody's curious, is, are we really going to get the things that we said we'd do if we do it with this approach? And we're now being able to come back for the first time and say, we just opened bids and yes, folks, it's for real, you can save money by bundling bridges and, and doing innovative designs like we're looking, like GRS, you know? Not, not much used really around here, but these things are, these things are going to make believers out of, out of people. And thanks to your leadership for really setting the stage to allow it to happen.
Well, you know, a, a few things. When you were presenting this to the commissioners and, uh, a huge advocate of this program, um, you had, you had boards, you had visualizations that people could see, you know? And you, I mean, when you, when you listed, uh, I, I remember it was like seventy-six structural deficient bridges and this is what could be closed and whatnot. You had graphs in charge and that would be nice to present as this project goes, moves along because then the, the public can see that and, um, to the staff, the current staff, they've stayed on it. And, um, you know, whether it was through your leadership or whatnot, I, I would say we have a, a group of dedicated people in, in our transportation field here. So hats off to you. And getting back to Bassetts, um, when, when you as an elected official have the confidence in a company, uh, that you believe that it, it sets that standard of integrity and commitment to our county, it's an easy choice to make. And, uh, you've been with us for a very long time and because of that hard work, dedication to our county, uh, you know, we take, take our hats off to you. We appreciate everything you've done for us and the way this pro, program is in, uh, development and now it's getting to the operation part of it. So really appreciate your hard work and, and keep up the good work. And I, I know you weren't in a suit and tie when you were under those bridges inspection act.
Enjoy us for a groundbreaking, we're playing something to put shovels in the ground, so.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's important to get to Eileen and the dates, so we, we would like to go out and see the bridges. We went out before and we toured them. Uh, what does GSR stand for in bundle number three?
Uh, GRS is Geo, Geo-Synthetic Reinforced Soil.
Oh, GRS.
Yes, yeah.
Geo-Synthetic Reinforced.
Yeah, you put down this Geo-Synthetic fabric, you put the stone on top, by compacting, you actually, you know, kind of push the stone into the fabric and you connect the layers of that. And then what it does is it gives a lot greater strength and stability, particularly stability during flooding. So as I say, you can't put it on a high velocity mountain stream, be put on a medium velocity stream. And the point is, like a lot of places, a lot of municipalities build them themselves. That's another, just like aluminum box covers, there are types of structures that, uh, someone with some initiative can build themselves. It's the other parts of the state where even a township crew can go out and build one of these things. So they're, they're very cost effective and, uh, they're durable and they look nice too. You'll see once you put in some in the ground.
You know, I want to echo Commissioner Masseo's comments and, and Mark, you're also somewhat modest. Um, you know, this really wouldn't have happened i- if you hadn't brought it to our attention and if you hadn't advocated and if you hadn't had a presentation that was, uh, convincing to the last Board of Commissioners. Um, and it's certainly an example that government works. You know, oftentimes we hear government doesn't do anything right. Well, that's just not true. I mean, and it's, it's time that people be honest and be realistic about the fact that a situation like this with seven thousand deficient local bridges, it's not just going to come from heaven that they're going to get repaired. And what this is an example of is showing that government can be efficient, government can be innovated and I think it's great that you explained to the public how you wrote the RFP so that it would get private sector innovation. Um, and the public is ultimately funding it, but in a very modest way with a five dollar a year addition to the registration of their vehicle for each year, five dollars. People spend two hundred dollars a month on cable television. They're spending five dollars a year and they're getting their bridges fixed in this county. And they should sit up and say, you know what? Government does work and, and, uh, we can make it work and frankly, it's all we've got in a democracy, okay? It's all we've got. So, uh, but I do want to also thank you because, um, it is exciting. I think the three of us are excited by it and we certainly want to come out there. And Mark, you can feel proud about this as something, when, when you said today there was an award, I, I, I was thinking some other, this was an award of the contract.
Yeah.
Right. I thought we were giving an award. It's an award of the contract.
By the way, local jobs. You have a local contractor, local jobs.
Yeah.
We, we didn't want to exclude the local contractors when we wrote the bid package because you could do that in a way by making the bundle too big.
Right. That's important, the public may not hear you because you're not at the mic, but he's saying that these are local contractors and local jobs. Obviously Dawson Engineering is local, but you're right, if you, if you had a large, uh, out of state or out of county entity come in, they may bring in their own crews. So hats off to you all for that too.
Thank you. That was part of what we, and they did the initial proposal to the county in what is the right bundle size? We actually interviewed, uh, um, the county had some questions for us after we did our initial presentation account, uh, uh, transportation staff. We interviewed about a dozen different contracts. We asked them, what is the right size bundle that is not too big for you to bid? And they all said four to five bridges. And particularly with aluminum box covers, we didn't want to exclude the small guys, the locals. I know Wallex is either small or they're local, they're not small, but that was the right size bundle for, to maximize participation. And so we stuck like, uh, the next two or five bridges each and then the third bundle is three bridges, three more expensive bridges. But the contractors told us, we were listening to them when they told us what was the right size bundle. It was not all seventeen at once, which some people were proposing bidding all seventeen at once. We saw that as being not best for the county's interests.
And, and by the way, for the public, what that means when we assess the five dollar fee on the registration is that entities that don't traditionally pay property taxes like our nonprofits, like our colleges, like our hospitals, where those local communities don't collect any property tax, they are contributing to this because they have vehicles, they have a fleet of a hundred or two hundred vehicles, they're contributing to it. So an example is Washington Township, it would have cost eight hundred thousand dollars to fix their bridge. Eight hundred thousand dollars, it would have come from property taxes from the small number of residents, many of whom are farmers in Washington Township. Instead, they're paying five percent, they're paying forty thousand dollars to repair and replace, or to replace that bridge. Now you can't get a better, a better deal than that. I had said to Senator Yon, I said to the people in the department, try to think of other ways we could use the model of a small fee assessment to leverage a bond or a loan that we take out to take on large infrastructure projects. Uh, because we have infrastructure money coming and to the extent that we can leverage it on, on larger ones, whether it's broadband or something else. And we've kicked some ideas around on broadband and other things. But I, I also would challenge Connor and Britt, if you can think of other ways that we can do something, let, pass that information on.
Well, we do, there are, there are a number of other bridges that we'll, we'll bring up on the list for that, but, you know, that is, what you say about what government can do is, is infrastructure. And it can take a five dollar fee and build it into a seven million dollar bond issue. You can't do that otherwise. That's, that's how government's supposed to work, is a modest fee that individuals and businesses can get a seven million dollar property going. You couldn't do that otherwise.
Britt, I want to thank you for your innovative ideas, um, you thought outside the box and you brought those to the county. Um, Mark, I want to thank you for your leadership and your mentorship to the current planning people in their department and, and they picked up the ball and ran with it and then followed you and you've assisted them along the way. Uh, again, this is a team approach and it is a model for the state to, to watch because it's, it's worked perfectly and you all should be commended on what you've done. And right here, you're saving six hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, almost half the cost. And like you said, you can do additional bridges with that.
Right.
So it's leveraging your money. I mean, when you can, when you can pay five percent of the bill and when you're a township, you can't beat that. And, uh, and the bundle's paying the rest of it. Anyone who wouldn't want to sign on to that, um, is misinformed because, uh, you're not going to find that anywhere. So these townships and the small bridges, um, are being repaired and this, you know, you think about school buses go across these, residents go across these and it's vital that they're fixed and they're, and when you go across and you're reassured, you know that you're not going to have what happened in Minnesota a few years ago. So thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody involved.
So there's one other informational item, if you want to talk about it. There's a vacancy coming up in the Lycum County Industrial Development Authority.
No, I mean, I think Austin was approaching the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry, Austin.
No, 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 I didn't know there was another informational item, I'm sorry. I was, I was going to do five one, I didn't.
So, um, that's the information for that one, if you, if there's a word opening for the authority.
Okay, great. So anyone in the community who would like to volunteer for the Lycum County Industrial Development Authority, please go to the website, get an application.
Okay. Um, and you might have an old, an old, uh, agenda.
Oh, yeah.
There was an updated one.
Yeah.
So five point one and five point two. Jason, yours, are you still on the line?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'll let you go ahead.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning Jason.
Um, Commissioner, I've got a question for Solicitor Smith. Is it right to reject the low bid first before we award to the other bidder or are we fine with awarding to the bid first?
Would you be acting on the, on the award today?
Yes, we would be awarding the agreement to the bidder.
Then I, then I think five point two should correctly state, uh, that you're voting to award the bid to X entity, whatever that is. I don't even know, I don't even know that you need to vote specifically to reject the other bid, although you can make that part of it.
Okay. Well, if that's not required, then there's, then that's, that's not necessary, if you're saying that. Um, Commissioners, uh, as we had briefed you on, we're presenting that you award the agreement with Mobile Dredging and Video Pipe Incorporated, the amount of nine hundred and nineteen thousand, twenty-one dollars. Commissioners, this is the bid and project of the jetting and cleaning and video inspection of all the leachate landfill leachate and gas collection system, the forced main, stormwater pipes. There's approximately four hundred, or excuse me, forty-four thousand of, uh, feet of piping to clean, there's almost fifty-six thousand linear feet of pipe for video inspection. Uh, we went out to bid, we pre-bidded April fourteenth, we opened bids, had two, two bidders. Um, low bid was Noble Environmental, but based on the analysis from Barton La Judas and John Wood and the staff and RMS staff, the lowest bid was not compliant and, um, that's why we were recommending that we award it to Mobile Dredging and Video Pipe. They do, this is their wheelhouse, shall we say, this is what they do. They have over fifty years of experience in this type of, uh, work. This is extremely dangerous work. Uh, so, uh, I think we're very comfortable in awarding it to Mobile Dredging and Video Pipe.
Okay, any questions or comments?
So just a quick comment, so this is obviously coming from the revenue of the landfill that you bring in, it's a lot of money. Maybe you can just explain for the public in a quick way what Mobile Dredging and Video Pipe is going to do for the almost one million dollars.
Commissioner, you bring up a good point. I guess, uh, I'll back up and say that these funds are coming out of our closure, post-closure account. So for every ton of garbage that comes in across the landfill scales, we set so many dollars back for the future closure of each landfill cell. We know that this is the type of work that goes into that. We're preparing to section off around ten acres, um, of old landfill section that we're going to be closing and before we can do that, there's some prep work we have to do with the leachate and, um, gas collection line. So in each landfill, the landfill itself is a living, breathing mountain of waste that's decomposing and as it breaks down, it creates methane gas amongst other things. That must be collected, there's a small vacuum, a light vacuum pulling on the gas as it pulls it into the system. Same with the leachate, as rainwater penetrates the surface of the waste, it becomes leachate in through the garbage. That too must be collected on the liner and pulled away from the waste. The gas is then taken and put in for the four cat engines with EPP and creates six point four megawatts of electricity. The biggest thing is leachate and gas that comes out of the landfill is incredibly dirty. When, the joke is, is you burn methane gas in the generation engines, it's almost like burning water because it's really dirty, it's wet. So that buildup that comes along with it usually plugs up and clogs our collection systems. Our collection system was never designed to have easy access and that's part of the project is we're going to be installing access points that we never had before and much needed. So I also, then later, will be bringing in a skater system project before you, but today we just want to get this award on for mobile dredging and video piping so they can get started on getting our leachate lines and gas lines cleaned for this year so we can prep for closure of the ten acres next year.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah. When, when you said, uh, non-compliant with the, the low bidder, could you explain that?
Um, Commissioners, yes, they, there were several requirements for the bidders to, to meet with. Noble Environmental Specialty Services was the low bidder when we opened a bid. Unfortunately, there's quite a bit of information that was missing, uh, especially, most notably would be qualifications and experience based on past projects like this. Uh, the references, references we contacted said they had not performed the work for them. So there was, uh, several things that were red flags for us, um, with such a sensitive project.
Was that information requested then, a follow-up?
Um, the Commissioners, based on the, uh, experience and stuff, we, we moving forward with what we're recommending. Not, they, the contacts they gave us were not sufficient and concerning.
Okay.
No further questions from you? Commissioner Mirepoito?
Yeah.
Okay, no further questions? Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Quick question for, Mr., Jason, in that, in that fund that you mentioned, the closure, post-closure fund, how much is in that for the public information that's been accumulated over the years?
Um, we have, we have the, right now, we currently have the thirty, or, excuse me, about forty-four million set, set aside for the closure and the post-closure that's required. So it's two funds, and then, of course, the Department of Environmental Protection has the fund set aside, and we have to guarantee it in bonds, that, so if today we were to walk away, the department would have the money that they could close it, thirty years. Yeah, we, if we do close today, we'd have to still have funding for thirty years to maintain the landfill.
Right, so that's important for the public to understand, that this money's been set aside so that we don't hit the taxpayers who happen to be around at the time of the closing, so.
Correct, and that's a requirement, sir, of all landfills in the, in the state of Pennsylvania, you're subtitled the landfills, is you must have a, a closure, post-closure fund, and plan as part of your permit.
Thank you.
So, is five point two being removed, then?
Yes.
Okay, I'll just wanted to make sure. Because we, you didn't vote, you didn't need to vote on rejecting.
According to Solicitor, we didn't need to vote to reject it.
I thought you just said we didn't have to do it first.
It's discretionary, if you made the award, by definition, you've rejected the other bid for the reasons identified. If you want to formally reject it, you may, but I don't believe it's required.
Would you request it?
I would, I would move to formally reject the apparent, the, the bid of Noble Environmental for non-compliant.
Okay, so we're an action item, it's five point two, Commissioner Mirepoito has made a motion to reject.
A second.
On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carry, so.
Commissioners, thank you very much for your time, have a nice day.
Thank you.
So, five point three, Austin Daley, this is voting on the award to General Construction.
Morning again, Austin.
Commissioners, so our recommendation would be to award the contract to Wollniet in the amount of four hundred ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars, conditional upon review of the signed agreement. Wollniet was the low bidder for the proposal by about ninety-five thousand dollars, they're local, and they have a familiarity with BAC engineering, so we felt they would be the best choice for this.
Okay, and questions or comments? Harry, now can I have a motion to accept the bid?
Yeah, I'll move to award the contract to Wollniet Construction.
A second.
On my favor, say aye. All right, so carry.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Five point four, John Lavelle, voting on HMGP grant award contract.
Planning day.
It's a busy one.
Yes, it is, it's good, it's good.
There's a lot going on.
Yes, there is, we heard that last week from Shannon. Your informational item from your department, and you guys are very busy.
Yeah, and we'll have another two RFs after this, so.
Yeah, okay.
This is a hazard mitigation grant program award in the total amount of nine hundred ninety-four thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars. It's for the acquisition and demolition of six houses, four in Old Lake Hurley and two in Muncie Borough. Those are all located in the floodways of their respective floodplains, and the municipalities were both consulted prior to submitting an application, which was done in May of 2019. As far as local cost share is concerned, seventy-five percent of this is taken care of by the, the federal government through FEMA, and then the remaining twenty-five percent, because it was a disaster fund, is taken care of by the state, so there is no local cost share in this grant.
Okay. So, John, when you look at Exhibit B, and you see site acquisition, the sixty-two, six hundred and seventy-two thousand, you go right on down.
That's our budget, yeah.
That's the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Are they solid numbers, or will they have to be bid as?
So, what we do, and it's worked well for us, the, the site acquisitions are pretty much solid, because that's based on the appraisal that we, we had done, I believe Jureau did our appraisals. What we also tasked Jureau with is, is an estimation for demolition, and he does that through, there's an estimation manual, I can't remember the name of it, but he'll give us a rough number, and then we're able to add a little bit of contingency and other things to that, but, but that, we're normally pretty solid.
So like when you see asbestos abating at fifty-eight thousand, well, I guess what I'm getting at?
That's, that's basically a contingency.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is that if it's over the price, what happens?
Um, so.
How's it funded?
So what we do, and, and we've never actually gotten to a situation where we go over budget on an HMGP project, because we have certain things built in there to, that we're kind of conservative when we estimate our budgets. But from my, my understanding is we would actually formally request that, that FEMA help us open back up the budget and, and see if we can't get more money put in. If, if there's any left over during a disaster declaration, in a disaster declaration account like this, normally it's, it's a pretty simple process.
So if we had excess, we didn't use it all, we'd return it back to FEMA?
Yeah, well, and then that also depends, because they can be flexible, depending on how old or new the grant is, this, we submitted this in 2019, so they'd probably just rather us leave that money go, but if it was a newer grant, and they, and they weren't itching to close it out, we'd be able to, to re-scope it, if we found another house that, that was ideal for an acquisition or something like that.
So we have, we have other homes in the bullpen in case we need?
Yeah, we actually just got a few homeowners that contacted us lately, are trying to vet and see if it's, you know, something that we can pursue on.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. I'll move to approve.
A second.
On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And five point five, Director McDarnall.
Commissioners, seeking your approval to reappoint for a five-year term, Ron Frick, Jeff Bauer, Joe Strauss, for the Lake Hurley County Industrial Development Authority.
Okay, I want to thank these individuals for serving for the authority, taking their time to serving on it, they've done so in the past, and they're asking again to be reappointed, so I have a motion.
I'll move to approve the appointment.
A second.
On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Commissioner, comment?
I have one, effective next Tuesday, June the first, all county buildings will not require mandatory mask. If you're vaccinated, you will not have to wear one. There will be no policing by the departments or the sheriff's office when you enter a county building such as the courthouse, those questions will not be asked. We will have postings on the door that if you have not been vaccinated, we encourage you to see your family doctor about possibly choosing to have a vaccine. But we will not require mandatory masks in, in county-owned buildings, with the exception of the prison and the pre-release building.
There may be some jury selection.
There may be some jury selection areas where you're required to have them, a judge could still require it in his or her courtroom if they chose to, within the courtroom, and also in the jury selections, there may be situations that are required. So it'll be on a case-by-case basis regarding those specific situations. And we issued a press release the other day regarding this, but I just wanted to make note for the general public.
Yeah, I got a couple.
Okay.
I read today in a paper, Chief Hagan is retiring, and I want to thank him for his service. He was a dedicated chief, he worked very hard, he cooperated with every law enforcement agency locally, and it was an honor to be sitting next to him and hearing what he had to say and implementing what he had to do. So, you're going to be missed, I'm sure there's other officers over there that'll step up, but you, you were, you were special chief, and good luck in the future. I want to get to another issue that, you know, it's disturbing, at least for me, anyway, because the Fourth of July is a ceremony that we should take pride in. We have to understand the history of this country to get us through the tougher times and, and understand why we did the things that we did, and what we can correct in the But it seems to me that the Fourth of July ceremony, we will not be having it on, because the bridges, Pendott is not going to allow us on the bridge, unless other municipalities give them a waiver and tell them that they, they'll have to pay for everything if something goes wrong, which that's probably not going to happen. We need this corrected. I'm, I'm not sure who I can go to, but this is special, and if we hide behind liability issues like we so do so often anymore, I just won't do it because I'll be held liable, we need to change our laws. And, and we need to take action down in Harrisburg. I'm pretty refreshed and, and happy that Joe Hamm is down there right now. He's not afraid to ask difficult questions, he pushes as hard as he can for the constituents of our region, and this is not, not endorsing Joe, I'm just telling you, this is how this guy is working. And this is another issue that we need to get solved.
Commissioner, can I interrupt you on this?
Yes.
Joe Hamm has introduced a bill, has actually passed the House with the assistance of Representative Wieland, to address this with Pendott highways. We specifically targeted the nine eleven ride, because we're coming up on the twentieth anniversary this year, which would be, they're planning a, hopefully a, a larger event in Lake Hurley County for the nine eleven ride. Last year, we were told by Pendott, by the roads, they couldn't, couldn't do so, so Joe has specifically introduced a bill, which passed the House, it's now in the Senate, that would take the liability off the townships and the boroughs where the traffic's going through, which would affect the bridge too, for the Fourth of July. So, last I talked to Joe, it's actually in the Senate being voted on, and then it'll go to the governor's desk if it's passed for him signing to make it a law, where they would not, Pendott could not say that they couldn't hold these events.
And how, how, how many people attend that downtown ceremony? A lot, right?
Thousands, and it's, it's.
Tens of thousands.
Thirty thousand.
Yeah, it's great for the, it's just great for the community to come together, the vendors, it's, it's a joyful celebration of our country, and it's sad that last year and this year, it may not be held, and, because of a legal technicality, and I know Joe's been working on it, just have assisted him, so they're, they're hoping to get this through the Senate and to move on, so they make it a law.
So, make some phone calls out there and, and see what we can do, because we don't want to miss this opportunity again.
Trying to understand, what was the incident that?
And I'm sorry, the, there's a senator that co-signed on from Lancaster, because they have a similar thing that goes on Lancaster with their highway.
You know what I don't understand, as a motorist, if you're injured on a Pendott road, you can't, well, I guess you could sue, but you're not going to win against Pendott. So they have protections from their, from, from being liable, yet then they hide under a liability umbrella for special events, so it doesn't make a lot of sense.
I'm trying to understand if there was something that happened, did something happen somewhere?
It, it, most likely, Commissioner, most likely, but that's, that's what I'm getting at, is if, whatever that may have been, we need to solve these, because you can't be shutting down events, and it's just logical to put it over top of the river, you know, and, and shoot them off there. It's just an awesome experience, you know, for everyone, just.
Do they shoot them off the bridge? I mean, I've been to the event many times, I'm trying to remember if they shoot them off the bridge, or they shoot them?
Yes.
The bridge is closed off.
Yes, it's closed off, for a very short period of time.
Right, yeah, I've been there every year since.
Shoot them off the dike, too.
Right, yeah, they shoot them off the dike.
Levy.
The levy, sorry.
You have any else?
No, I don't.
Commissioner, you have a hint?
Just one other thing, I want to thank the, the hostage negotiation teams that we've recently had to deploy, the state police, the Lake Hurley County one, these are professionals in law enforcement and the correctional facilities that have gone away to training and have learned how to successively negotiated hostage situations. We've had three in our county within the last, I think, six weeks to, two months. There was one that's, it was up northern part of the county where four state troopers were pinned down, and thankfully, everyone came out safe, and they were able to take the individual into custody safely. Same thing happened in Newberry not too long ago, and due to their professionalism and training, the key word is, is the training, they were able to come through successful, so everyone went home that night, and the offender was taken into custody, and get the help, if they needed the help or face the charges they had to face for the situation. So, want to thank every one of those professionals that took the time, some of them are volunteers that are in other lines of the correctional system, that have volunteered to be trainers and to assist with the negotiations on the hostage teams, so I want to thank them.
Yeah, I'll just ditto my colleague, Mr. Myster's comments to Chief Hagan, we wish him the best, all the experiences I've had with him have been very professional and really very committed law enforcement officer, and I know he had a dream to have a public safety building, and someday that may come to fruition, thank him for his efforts.
Okay, any other comment?
No.
Okay, hearing none, we are adjourned, and our next meeting will be Tuesday, June the first.
Yep.
Right here at 10:00 AM. I want everyone to enjoy the memorial day, and again, please remember to honor our fallen veterans and the ones that are with us. Have a good week.
Good June already.
Yes.
They were in June, I'm.
No, we got it.
We might still be on camera.
Hey, thank you.
Mike, we might still be on camera.